Work session in the City Council of Trinidad and Colorado on Monday, November twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five, at three P M. in the City Council Chamber, the City Hall, one thirty-five, North Adams Street, Trinidad, Colorado. We have two items for consideration with parts A through E for the second. So item number one is the Trinidad Housing Authority Annual Report.
Mayor Pritchett, we have Ms. Cathy Adams here.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
Sorry, you're gonna have to look at me from behind, Mayor. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I do have some reports, you can follow along. My report isn't long.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you have an extra Cathy, we'll take it for the record.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, thank you for having me. Council members, I appreciate it. My name is Cathy. I'm with Trinidad Housing Authority. I brought a couple of staff members with me. I have my crew chief, Rich Pacchelli, and my right hand, Sarah Reno. We have not done an annual report in quite some time, so it was time to bring one before y'all. So I did attach some pictures and they go through it. I just wanted to know Trinidad Housing Authority administers three programs within the community. Our public housing is Section Eight in our Corazon Square. Our public housing, we have one hundred and ninety-eight units. Excuse me. Currently, we have eighteen units offline for asbestos removal and depletion, and they are going under a modernization as soon as they are done. That is moving along quite fast. Hopefully, we'll have several done before the end of next year. I have two units offline that have been offline since two thousand and twenty-one from an unfortunate accident, they happened to displace two families. Those units are currently being disposed of. There's an awful lot of paperwork to go in, and I'm in the beginning stages with HUD. So once we get those done, once we do let go of those two units, the funding we receive from that will be able to use to either build or add two more to our units, because it'll knock us down to one ninety-six. I have six units that are currently in make-ready status. We have a one-bedroom, we have three two-bedrooms, and we have two three-bedrooms. We are working diligently. My maintenance staff is turning those over. We've been housing quite a bit. As of November first, our waitlist did open. We've had our waitlist closed down since October of twenty-four. We started pulling units offline for the asbestos program, and we have now opened. I don't have current totals. These totals that you see below are the totals I pulled in October. I will have new totals at the end of November. But as you can see right now, my waitlist consists of seventy-two. That consists of elderly, disabled. It's one bedrooms, two bedrooms, three bedrooms, and four bedrooms. The projects we have going now, again, is the asbestos modernization, the off-street. We have an extra one for you. Did you read it?
Yes, we did. We'll share.
Okay.
We share everything.
We have the asbestos modernization project going right now. We have off-street parking. We have one project finishing up on First Street right now. That's been a little bit of a lengthy project. They've had a few challenges. It's about to wrap up. It'll be wrapped up before the end of the year. We had one done on San Pedro this past year, and it worked out really well. Pulled a lot of those cars off the street, and they have their own parking now. Our taxi building roof is finally repaired. That's been a long process. It had severe damage in the roof, a lot of rotage and so forth. So that has been repaired and fixed. We did a project, we did several projects this year. We put new J F I electricals in all one hundred and ninety-eight of our units. We also put combo smoke detectors. We did several concrete pads throughout the city of Trinidad on several roof jacks, fence and tree trimming, and retaining walls where it was needed. We're still in the process of doing more as the new year comes in. Our fiscal year starts April first. We do have the funding to do some more, so we will finish that up as we go forward. Our challenges on this program, like anything, it's funding and drug units. As you know, a lot of the drug units need to be remediation done. It has become very pricey. We have to get a biohazard person here. We only have one currently in the community. That has caused quite an expense on us, something that wasn't in our budget, but we are working on getting them out of the budget this year or so, because we have quite two of them. Other than that, our react score, we scored ninety-four. We were a very high performer. The reports, yes, the reports are in the back of this. You can look at the reports there. My Corazon Square is a multifamily facility. It's for elderly and/or disabled. I have fifty units of multifamily apartments in this complex, five or two bedrooms, forty-five or one-bedroom apartments. Utilities are included in the rent. As of one-one of twenty-five, we have been at ninety percent occupancy, which we have remained that throughout the year. And currently, we have two make-ready's right now. We do have one unit that will be down for quite a bit. I am required to have one eighty-eight unit within the fifty facilities, the fifty units we have in the facility. That unit is getting a total makeover right now. So that will be done for a little bit. As you can see, the waitlist, my waitlist is really down there. We only have three on the waitlist. Those units don't turn around very often, so the waitlist becomes a long, lengthy wait, and by that time, some of these house up. So we do have it on our website. We have been advertising in the local newspapers and on the radio. So we'll continue, of course, to get our waitlist built a little bit. Projects on this facility, of course, we've done a lot of new flooring, and we've replaced some new appliances. Challenges, like anything else, it's an ancient building. We're struggling with the elevator. We're gonna need a new elevator sometime soon, which is quite expensive, as you all know. You all have one as well. I'm trying not to keep my back to the camera, I'm sorry. And again, drug nicotine remediation, the nicotine remediation has been an issue. Smoking was a big thing back in the years. We're trying to get all the units at park. So that takes a little bit, one just painting. We are not contracting that out anymore. Our maintenance department is doing that. So once we get that done, we'll be up to code on everything. Our more score, this is a management operation review. It is pending. We start this review in early October. I just got word Friday that they have our results. I have not received them yet. Hopefully, we're a high performer on that facility as well. All programs are required to pass eligibility and suitability to be housed. Applications, there's three to five applicants that are pulled for one unit, and at that time, they have to fit in the box, of course. Backrooms are a major one, they have to fit in the background. Also landlords play a big part in making sure they can have utilities, and we have no balances in the name of the city. And I believe I skipped one page, if I did. I did. So I'll run back to actually my Section Eight program. My Section Eight program, as you all know, we do provide vouchers. We are allotted eighty-four vouchers a year. We have never been able to fill that. We just haven't had the funding. We are currently in shortfall with the Section Eight. So we shut our Section Eight waitlist down last year in January. We have not opened it yet. Just this past, I believe it's been October, I have five for a shortfall. We were granted ninety-four thousand dollars shortfall because we were not able to issue any more vouchers. We're housing forty-six vouchers at this current time. Rent increase hurt us quite a bit. We weren't able to subsidize as much. The average rent is six hundred and fifty-one dollars. So with that being said, Chappa and HUD were able to front us some money. They're doing it in allotments, but we will, once we get our final ninety-four thousand, nine forty-two is what we qualify for. So we will hopefully be able to build our reserves and open our waitlist once we're back with some funding available. As you follow along, I have some photos. I just wanted to show you a little bit of what's going on. The first one is on Second Street, it's our asbestos project. Those are four studios that were taken offline this past year. Studios have totally been stripped of asbestos. The asbestos is clean, we've got total clearance, and we are expecting bids in our office on the fifth of December. We're looking to remodel. So that is already moving along. After that, you're gonna see quite a few different units where we replaced a lot of tile floor. Our playground, we brought it to par. We brought some newer equipment in. We've done a lot of handrails for a lot of the units. As you know, it is not a requirement, it's a reasonable accommodation, but a lot of our tenants are needing handrails, so we're trying to provide as much as we can when we have someone come in and doesn't need them and we don't have a unit to supply them with. We try and make sure we're trying to get them well as far as the grab bars and all the bathrooms and the walk-in showers. As you move along, a lot of concrete pads replaced this past year. We had a lot of mud washage, and so we're trying to find a place to put garbage disposal on there instead of leaving them in the mud. We got several of them done this year. What we didn't finish, we will continue with our budget this coming year in twenty-six. Several more units with tiles and countertops. We've had some major issues up on the carbon area, a lot of plumbing issues. This was our last unit that we finished up that had some plumbing issues. We have now got it fixed, and we are ready to turn this over as a makeover. So this unit is a four-bedroom unit, and this is just one of several that we have had issues with, but one at a time, we're slowly getting them up. So the Corazon Square is doing fine. It's, we have one maintenance and one custodian down there, and Sarah works part-time down there in the office. This facility pretty much holds its own. We haven't had a whole lot of issues other than some aging out things that we're trying to work on, and hopefully our budget provides for that this coming year. I did take a picture of the mailboxes that are in Corazon Square. That mailbox is quite open, and that is pricey. That is something we'll have to get in our budget. We'd like to replace that for our tenants for more security and to make sure it's working properly. And of course, our famous elevator that we've worked, we're striving to work on it. Grab bars have been placed in every unit in the Corazon Square area. We are slowly working on putting walk-in showers. The idea is for senior living, so we are slowly getting that in as well. There again, some new carpet, more concrete pads. This is the San Pedro off-street parking, which they're working out very well and very pleased with them. And of course, we will get to, there's some landings. There's, again, we have some portable landings that we use for people who need wheelchair chairs or walkers to get in, so we do have those available with the accommodation with the unit that does not have it. So we do try and accommodate with that as well. The San Pedro lot, that lot right there is a lot that was purchased quite some time ago. Once we dispose of the two units in carbon, this lot is vacant, and we have owned it for quite some time. This lot, we just recently put a new fence in because of problems we were having over in that area, and we did put in a retaining wall. This project may be a site in the near future to replace the two units that we're disposing of. So as we get to that, that is a proposed lot that we own and we'd like to just own with it. There is a taxi building that we had the roof repaired. I've got some pictures of the roof that was done. Again, some more units. One of our big projects I'd like to get on to, maybe replacing windows, more insulation, get some of our units a little more insulated, energy efficient for our tenants. We're working on that. Taxi building again, and there again, the last page is our First Street project, the off-street parking. That has been a challenge. We have three complexes there, there's four units in each. We have quite a few cars that park in the back alley. City didn't like that we were doing that, so we tried to fix it, and that's what we're doing. So that should be completed by the end of the year, and we're very impressed with what they've done. It looks tremendous. It's looking much better. I don't have anything else to report here, just wanted to give an update on where we're at. We're moving. We've had some transition decisions in our office. Just want to thank City Council and the Mayor for, they made the board that you've placed with us, very knowledgeable, very helpful. They've been completely supportive and a lot of buckets. Can't thank you all enough. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I don't have anything else. If y'all have any questions, we're here to answer. If not, we'll be on our way and let y'all get to business.
I just note, this has been quite a turnaround, and I can't believe all the work that you all have gotten done in a short period of time. I was just curious, do you, is all of the work that you're doing in-house, or do you contract out?
It's a combination of both. I will have to brag a little bit on Rich Pacchelli. He's been with our housing for forty-some years, and he is amazing. If he doesn't know, we do find somebody to come in and to train him, and he has been trained quite a few of our maintenance guys. They've, they've come so far. I mean, I can't say enough about Rich and my maintenance staff. So it's a combination of both. If it's de-plumbing, as some of the pictures you did see, those have to be contracted out. We just don't have the capability to do it without maintenance staff. But as far as painting goes, turning over make-ready's, plumbing issues inside, electrical, thermostats, boilers, we contract out the boilers if it's something beyond what our knowledge is. But other than that, we're cutting back on a lot of our funding, we're saving on our budget, trying to do a lot on our own and get training. So as we go forward, I think our maintenance staff is gonna get stronger in a lot of the maintenance department.
All right. What, I missed the very first few minutes of this, unfortunately. What is the total population that we're serving through the?
As far as our waitlist of the population of Trinidad?
The population that we're serving that are housed at this time? How many people are housed?
Well, we have one hundred and ninety-eight units and fifty on one side and fifty on the other, so it's over three hundred people, homes actually, that were, there are two and some, and some children. So if I want the demographics, I can email you all the demographics. There were some on some of this, some of the demographics that show what's on our waitlist, but I can also leave in that information.
Does, are you all thinking of any new projects with funding or like new builds or anything like that?
As I said, the two that we're disposing of, I do need to replace those. So with the direction of HUD and our board, we're striving to use the lot on San Pedro that I sat back in for quite some time, which is a confirmed lot. So we are in the beginning stages looking at that. After that, I'm not sure where funding's gonna go. Our twenty-six is fine. With everything that's changed, I don't know where we're gonna be in twenty-seven, but we need to stay positive and hope so, and hopefully we can strike forward. And also too, with the Section Eight as well, the vouchers do help if we can come from some of those vouchers. Most of those people eventually fund, the vouchers do come to the housing, so hopefully we'll be able to get back on our feet with the funding and get some of our reserves built, and hopefully we'll be able to turn around some more housing. So we're doing our best.
Great job.
Sure.
No, the only thing I tell you is, thank you and your staff and everybody for doing such a good job bringing up these units. It's a real plus for us for the problems that we had in the past, and it looks really great, so just keep up the good work. That's, I think that's really great, and I hope you get more funding to get more of this done.
We're working very diligently for that funding. We appreciate everything the city has done for us. Thank you. And I also wanted to thank Ockla. Ockla's been amazing. She's jumped in and helped where I needed help. The city's been amazing, and like I say, our board is amazing. I see Michael sitting back there. Michael has been a tremendous asset to us. He really has, and guidance on my part, if there's something I don't know, he knows exactly where to go to to find questions, answers, whatever I need. So I can't thank the city enough for standing behind us and supporting us. We appreciate y'all.
Just one moment. Mayor, did you have any questions?
Just, just one quick question. Cathy, I'm assuming that you're the acting executive director. Is that correct?
Yes.
Have, has the board pursued a permanent person for that position yet?
I will direct that to our.
We'll have an answer momentarily, Mayor.
Good afternoon, Mayor.
Hi, Michael. How are you?
Good, how are you? So the board has done a search for a new director. We are in the process of getting interviews set up at this point, and we'll hopefully have a new appointed director before the end of the year.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
I just have a couple, I think, really basic questions. So what is the difference between, and I suspect I know, but what's the official difference between offline and make-ready?
An offline is where HUD allows us to take it offline because it's gonna be offline longer than thirty days.
Oh, okay.
After thirty days, my funding starts to become.
I see.
So I only have thirty days to turn over a make-ready unit.
So a make-ready is expected to take less than thirty days?
Yes.
Okay. And then the other question I have, and thank you so much for your report today, is it going to be, are we gonna try and make some sort of effort to have an annual report about this time every year then? So that'll be going forward?
It is actually now that I've pulled the binder out and the report and in some of the guidelines as far as a bylaw for whatever executive directors are appointed, that it will turn forth every year.
Thank you so much, and it's so encouraging to see the score of ninety-four, from memory?
We've worked extremely hard for those scores.
I would say you did work extremely hard, so.
It was, it was all of us. It was the entire staff. Everybody had a plan this, so.
We really want to say thank you for the dedication, and it definitely is showing, so thank you.
We couldn't do it without the support, so we appreciate all you.
We appreciate it. Thanks, great time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a nice day and happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Thank you.
Happy holidays, guys.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
So item two is for the boards and commissions, interviews. So I don't see Renee, Renee Monahan for the library board?
So Renee let us know that she's out guilty today and she can't make it today. We're gonna push her to the next work session.
All right, so Eric Shepherd from Arts and Culture Advisory Commission? Don't think so either, huh? This is gonna be quick?
Yeah.
Amber Barowski?
That's me.
Thank you. So for the Historic Preservation Commission, thank you. If you wanna come on up.
Sure.
So if you don't mind, and if you ask me to repeat this, that's fine, but if you would like to just give us a brief summary of yourself, and if you can include why you're interested in serving on this board, what you know about the board specifically and the work it does, and how will your skills add to that? If you want me to repeat that, certainly can. The most important part is, we're very grateful you could be here today, so let's just treat this as a conversation, have a back and forth, and we genuinely appreciate your interest in serving, so if you want to let us know.
Sure. Let me start off by telling you all that I discovered Trinidad when I was traveling through here on my honeymoon a few years ago, and while my husband and I were driving through the streets, I noticed the abundance of Victorian housing. Victorian is one of my favorite architectural styles, so it definitely spoke to me. We did a little bit more visiting here through the years, and about a year and a half ago, we decided that we wanted to move out of Texas, and we set our sights on Trinidad, and we found a house here in town and moved, and we've just fallen in love with everything about the city ever since. I do have a passion for history and for preserving it. I do not have a whole lot of experience, but I do want to get involved in the community that I have chosen to spend my life in, and that is, I think, the best way that I can do it, because that's where my special interests lie, so.
Okay. What, what skills? I have two questions, I guess.
Sure.
And then we'll get follow-up questions from the board, that's all right. So what, do you know specifically what they do, and have you been to any meetings or?
I've done a little bit of research on it. I have not had an opportunity to go to some of the meetings yet. This is really my first foray into trying to get involved with the community. So no, I don't have a whole lot of experience, but that is something that I've wished to build.
Certainly. So I mean, just generally, what has been your past work experience, and how do you think that will translate to being helpful on the board?
Personally, my experience is more in customer service as far as profession goes. As far as experience with history, I grew up in Dallas. There's not, in the suburbs, there's not a whole lot of history going on there. A lot of it's being torn down and rebuilt with a lot of like big mansions and everything, and it's just a very sad sight to see. So no, as far as my own hits, my own experience goes, I'll be honest, I don't have a whole lot. That's kind of what I'm wanting to get into and learn more about. I do know the purpose of the Historical Preservation Commission is to try and help preserve the history of the town, and I do know that there are some regulations and whatnot that go into that, and I'm familiar, you know, with like Victorian housing, especially a lot of times it'll be like you have to have a certain number of colors on the outside of the housing, and so I know a little bit of that. I'm interested in learning more, and I'm really interested in serving the community.
Well, thank you. Does anyone else have any follow-up questions?
I just wanted to say, we always welcome people from Texas, so.
Thanks. And. It's a breath of fresh air every year.
I'm so glad you think that. Serving on that commission is one of the first things that I did in Trinidad when I moved here about eleven years ago to get involved, so it's a great thing to do, a way to really contribute.
Just wanted to thank you for your, for your interest in wanting to join our community in that way. Just have one other question. Time constraints, are you able to tendle them, or you can, you don't have any conflicts?
I work from home. I have a very flexible schedule. I don't have any problems.
Wonderful. And downtown? Sorry. No, go ahead. Sorry, I know I said one, but. And you did mention the Victorian homes in the commercial district, and do you have a favorite building that you would like to work on?
Um, yeah, actually the one right at the corner here of Main and Los Angeles.
The Blue Crate Building is amazing.
Yes, the Blue Crate Building. It's gorgeous and it's beautiful, and I heard somebody at the, at the meet the candidates call it an eyesore and a ghetto, and that just hurt my heart, and I couldn't believe that somebody referred to it that way, because it has so much potential and beauty.
Have you seen the picture of the trolley parked in it?
No.
Yes, it is amazing. Blue Crate is one of our, I think it's one of our most salvageable buildings that we can do something with.
Yeah.
And I'd love to see that one renovated.
Yeah, it definitely took me by surprise when we drove through and started getting it done in town.
Yeah. No, I just want to thank you for the enthusiasm, and I think you'll do really good on the board, and it's nice to have a fresh view from somebody that will learn from stuff too. And if you work with the board, I think it'll be a great experience for you.
Thank you.
Mayor, Mayor Grayson?
Hi, Amber. I'm sorry I won't be able to be there in person today, but you know, it's very impressive that you noticed the downtown architecture and the Victorian houses. I will make, I will make one observation about, passion to me is the most important part of joining a board like this. You have to have passion about what your objective is, and I think you hit it spot-on, and I think you'll, you'll do a great job. And you have, you mentioned that you have no conflicts with your private schedule, that you'll be able to go to the meetings?
Yes, ma'am. That's correct.
Okay. Well, you know what? It's really, really nice to see somebody that's new to the community, to step up and accept a position like this. I think you're the right person on there, and I wish you all the best of luck.
Thank you.
I, with that, I think we're good. Sincerely, thank you so much for your interest in coming down and doing all the work to jump through the hoops, so we do appreciate it. Just so you know, this will not, I imagine this will be on the next agenda?
It will, for December second.
Yeah, so on December second, it'll come up for a vote, and we'll see how it goes.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. Dee, and I, Hill McCoy for Historic Preservation Commission?
Mr. McCoy asked if you could put him as late. Is it you? Yeah, Hill McCoy. Hillary. That's okay. That's okay.
What, what is?
It's Hillary. It's Hill.
Oh, I apologize.
That's okay.
Come on up.
Okay.
So Hillary?
Yes.
And you can almost copy and paste what she just said for me, because I'm from Arlington, Texas. I moved here.
We've had our Texas quota.
Really?[1729.62]
So, uh, thank you so much for being here today, Hillary. Or, or do you go by Hillary?
I go by Hill.
Okay, Hill, thank you. Um, so just the same thing, if you don't mind giving us a introduction of yourself. And if you can, and we'll be glad to go over it again.
All right.
Just if you can, why are you interested? What do you know about the work that they're doing already and how would your skills add value?
Okay. Um, I'm Hill McCoy. I'm from Arlington, Texas. My husband and I moved here in April last year. And since we moved here, he retired. He's a social worker. I work from home for a company in Loveland, Colorado called Safe Built, which they're provide, they're party providers of building inspectors, building officials, plans examiners, planning and zoning people. So I have a little background, I guess, and understanding, you know, building codes from, from that. For them, I am a sales proposal writer and I thought, well, maybe some of my skills is that could translate into like grant writing, which, you know, I, I love the buildings here and I, I see that some of them are, are falling down unfortunately, but I would like to do what I can to, to flip that and change that. And again, like Amber would say, her favorite building is that one over there, the Blue Crate Building. That one's my favorite too. And I just like the underground aspect of it, which I think is really cool. See, what are the other questions?
You've, I think, you know, you said why you're interested. You all, you know what we do and so you've addressed the skills. So I think, I really think that covered those initial.
All right.
Three. Um, so I would start out by saying sincerely, thank you. We do, we do appreciate the interest. Um, and then is there further questions?
What, what's this newly formed bell choir? Oh, yeah, the Trinidad Music Association, I think it is. They, I guess, have a set of handbells and they went to the Stephen, Stephen Foster concert in the spring. And they're like, hey, we've got some bells. Do you, does anybody want to play bells? I'm like, I used to play bells like thirty years ago. And so I, I guess our first performance is next week. I hear the Lutheran Methodist, whatever it is, it's Episcopal. I don't know. Yeah, yeah, you know the ones. It's a somewhat off of state. So, yeah, so I've been enjoying that. We've got our first concert next week. Incidentally, my insurance company that my company contracts through will be here in Trinidad to film a commercial of my house. I had a double mastectomy in the spring and my insurance was like, you know, came through because UC Health is trying to charge me seventy-eight thousand dollars for it. And I'm like, oh, I'm deductible. What, what's going on here? They're like, yeah, you know, don't worry about it. Well, they took it to court and got that taken care of. So, so yeah, we'll have some, try to bring like, oh, and I've got another friend that's, that I've talked into moving here. They're closing on house tomorrow. So, yeah.
Cool.
Don't be litigious if you're on a board.
That's the attorney.
Well done with that.
We do no surgery.
Yeah, that's right. That's right.
I, I'm just thrilled. Thank you for moving here. Thank you for bringing another friend along.
Yeah, I've been coming here since the eighties and we, this was our stop, our first night stop from DFW. Going up to Washington State where it was cooler weather during the summer.
Yeah.
Where all my family is. And so I fell in love with it back then and was like, oh, neat. There's a ski, skiing rink. Yay. And, um, you know, ever since then, whenever I've gone through Colorado to get anywhere, I'm like, we stopped here. I'll just check this out again and talk to my husband and move in here. And he's like, yep, this feels like home. So, great. Yeah.
Anything, Frank? No, just thank you. We appreciate it.
You're welcome. Awesome.
Thank, oh. How are you? Thank you so much for your interest and I think you'd be a perfect, a perfect fit and would be a really good asset to that crew that is hosting on there now.
Awesome.
And then Mayor Grego, uh, do you have any specific questions at all?
I don't, I didn't hear it. Have you gone to a meeting yet, Hillary?
No, I haven't.
Okay. But you're almost a carbon copy of Amber. I mean, the passion's there and I'm really excited about that. You know, especially newcomers. I appreciate you coming to the community and I appreciate your willingness to serve on this board. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well, all right. I think that concludes all the questions. Sincerely, thank you. And as you already heard, we'll have the agenda on December second.
Sounds good. Appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, Hill.
And last but by no means least, Eric Trider for Planning, Zoning and Variance Commission.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor. Good afternoon, council people.
Good afternoon.
I'm Eric Trider and I'm seeking to serve Trinidad on the Planning, Zoning and Variance Commission. I have a feel for what the board does. I attended the last board meeting where they reviewed, um, working on the, the comprehensive plan. One of the best ways of describing what the board does is it preserves quality of life for people who live in the community and, uh, an example of bad planning and zoning, when we lived in Alaska, sometimes we'd travel up to Anchorage for groceries and during the seventies and eighties, during the pipeline days, it was a boomtown. There was no attention paid to accessibility, parking, parks, trails, very, very few parks, trails or insufficient utilities. It was a mess. And as far as I can tell, the, the commissions here in town have done a much better job of, handling the infrastructure challenges and zoning and, uh, issues that have come before them than, than Anchorage did. So I have a bit of a feel for what, what the board does. The, I feel like the commission can help provide solutions to advance two of my top priorities, public safety and addressing homelessness. When I ran for city council, I tried hard to formulate solutions to mitigate the, uh, public safety issues posed by our growing homeless population. And high housing costs are one cause of homelessness. The Planning and Zoning and Variance Commission makes decisions that impact the ability of people to attain housing. And that, that is one way of easing the issue of homelessness. Also, just, I, I think the Planning, Zoning and Variance Commission could hold a key to unlock the creation of a whole new industry here in town. A new Trinidad State College vocational curriculum and a different form of affordable housing, tiny homes. Creating a subdivision zone for tiny homes could create a market for tiny homes. And that market could be met by local entrepreneurs such as the metalworking shop out on East Main who fabricates trailers. We might approach the Trinidad State College and have them develop a vocational program centered around building tiny homes. And it could, it could produce some jobs that AI will not replace in the coming ten years. Because there's evidence to suggest that, uh, there could be vastly offs due to AI and during the next decade. That's a whole other thing. Also, I'd like to say I'm not a big fan of growth for the sake of growth. I'd like to help Trinidad retain its small town flavor. I want Trinidad to grow without hollowing out the neighborhoods that already give this town its soul. On the commission, I prioritize infill and rehab in existing neighborhoods and support programs like Housing Now that convert vacation, vacant downtown buildings into homes. Make sure new subdivisions pay their true infrastructure costs. I'll favor connected, mixed income neighborhoods over leapfrog sprawl and use our comprehensive plan as a firm guide and press for sidewalks, trees and basic amenities in older areas so that those areas remain livable and sustaining. I'd love to help advance the Adopt a Pocket program. You may not have heard about that. It was, uh, two weekends ago at Trinidad, at the Trinidad Hackathon, one of the teams designed a program to transform small neglected spaces in our community into public assets that incorporate art, gardens and places to relax. This program has synergies with our art community and could provide citizens with the means to use their creativity to beautify folk's small spaces in many different ways and allow our residents to feel like they put their stamp onto something meaningful and enduring. Why I'm qualified, over the past twelve years, we've been remodeling a one-hundred and ten-year-old home here in Trinidad. And we took it down to the frame. We've updated nearly every feature and utility in the home. Learned a lot about plumbing, heating, electrical, building codes, roofing, landscaping and more. And I also understand costs, planning, schedules and unfortunately our skilled labor shortages. I also know a lot about solar electricity, having taken two professional-grade courses in the subject. And as a former oilfield supervisor, I'm skilled at conflict resolution and team building. As a former candidate for city council, I've become familiar with many of the branches of city government. I'm retired and I can devote a lot of time to, to this board. And one more interesting fact, my wife and I, during our campaign for city council, we walked on foot to two thousand of Trinidad's owns in order to share our vision for the future. We know these neighborhoods inside and out, every aching foot of them. And I mean, we're thoroughly charmed by all of Trinidad's unique neighborhoods. We want to do everything we can to strengthen and preserve them.
Mr. Trider, if I could please, sir, I'm sorry for interrupting council. I just want to make sure so that you understand that a lot of what planning and zoning does is just kind of like nuts and bolts.
I understand.
Okay, good. Like variance applications, conditional use permits, not a lot of policy, not a lot of implementing programs. Just want to make sure you understand that, sir.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay, good. Thank you. Sorry for interrupting, but, but thank you.
I appreciate the participation.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I would say, Mr. Trider, you, you know, you thoroughly answered all three of those points. So thank you very much. And then, so we'll, we'll just go right into it. If there's any, you have any questions additional?
I, I don't have any questions, Eric. Thank you so much. Thank you for your interest in what you continue to do.
Any further questions?
I did.
Maybe, maybe he answered it.
What, what about all the prep work that you did when you were running for city council and talking with thousands of people that made you want to do, that made you want to volunteer time?
I want to serve, we want to serve this community. We could have lived anywhere when we, when we retired. And we chose this town because it's a friendly, small town where we feel, we feel valued and a place where we feel like we can make a difference. So that's, 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 that's why we're here. And we have no plans to leave. No, I don't. I mean, I don't have anything. Thank you for putting it up.
You're welcome. Thank you very much. You know, I would say, um, I would say it's, it's so impressive that while you weren't successful in your bid for city council and that's obviously a huge undertaking and, uh, we commend you for undertaking that and the effort you put into it. It shows a lot of character and heart to continue your, um, seeking to help Trinidad. So thank you for that. And then lastly, I'll just ask the mayor. Mayor Grego, do you have any questions specifically?
Eric, how are you? Just wanted to know, have you ever gone to a, a meeting at a Variance Commission?
Yeah, I did it in the last meeting, ma'am.
Okay. And what'd you think?
I, I, as, as Les mentioned, it's very much nuts and bolts stuff. But it also has, it also has ramifications that go beyond just the minutia involved with, uh, the, the things that the, the board considers.
All righty. Okay. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. As I'm sure you heard, we'll, we'll vote on it later.
Thank you.
Well, with, with that, I think we have concluded this agenda at three forty-three. So thank you all for being here.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you all. Happy Thanksgiving to all of you.
Happy Thanksgiving.